Evening, everyone. Welcome to our March tenth, two thousand and twenty-one planning board meeting. Will you all please join me in our pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Indivisible, liberty, justice. Thank you very much. Um, Saret, will you please take the role?
Yes, Chairman Curry.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Matt Namara.
Here.
Ms. Gannon.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Uh, Mr. Zaberto. And Mr. Mattis.
Here.
Thank you.
Yeah, you did. I'm here.
Covino.
And here.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I have the town cellphone. If we get any text messages, I'll let you guys know.
Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda is the minutes from the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Um, if there's no corrections or additions, deletions, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as were presented to us.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, our first project is the Somers sanitation, Inc., and for the record, it's an application for site plan approval and special acceptance use permit for the improvement and additions to the existing transfer and recycle facility for the property known as two forty-one Route one hundred. Um, is there someone here from that applicant that would like to give a brief presentation? Then we'll turn it over to um, our professionals.
Okay, uh, we have several people in the waiting room.
Okay.
Would that be Leslie Snyder, Rich Williams, Andy Chung?
Leslie Snyder.
Leslie Snyder.
Is there a rich Colangelo there?
Yes.
He's also part of that team.
Hi, Leslie and Rich. Um, I just thought maybe you'd like to bring us up to date where we are, and then we'll talk to our our town planner and our town consulting engineer.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
And members of the board. Um, as you recall, we were last before you uh, last month, and there was some additional materials that were being requested by the planner and the town engineer. Uh, we up, those included updating um, the SWP, the environmental assessment form, um, and the plans. Uh, we've, we've done all that. We believe they're substantially complete. Um, and so we would just ask tonight to schedule a public hearing for your April meeting.
Rich, do you have anything to add before I turn it over to the others?
Uh, no, uh, that's about it. You know, just here, if there's any other questions that need to be answered, but like Leslie said, we're looking for the public hearing so we can move forward.
Steve, um, you want to comment on, on um, the responses to your, your comments from Wood and Curran?
Uh, sure. So we received a memo from them this afternoon, um, that he, yes. So we, we did have a chance to take a, a quick look at it, but um, obviously there's revised plans uh, referenced in that document that we've not yet received nor had time to review.
Correct.
We're gonna have to look at them before the next meeting.
Yes.
Right, the, I, I think Steve will agree. There was just a few responses. We still needed to provide a few more details, but I don't think they're really substantive in the sense that you can't schedule the public hearing. We will get those to you promptly.
Exactly, and we'll, and we'll get the revised plans out probably next week, so.
You, you concur, Steve?
Yes, I do.
You feel comfortable scheduling a public hearing?
Uh, well, I mean, I guess with the, with the understanding that we haven't had a chance to review their responses, the, the the letter again that we received three hours ago.
Right.
Uh, anticipates responses to our comments.
We need all responses within the next two weeks.
No problem. We, um, as you probably know, in February week, we got a detailed list, uh, Steve, from your office, and we submitted that back. These were just the additional ones, which really weren't as many. Uh, we're pleased to say, so we appreciate that. We'll get that to you in the next two weeks. No problem, Dennis. Thank you.
I guess, I guess if everybody should feel comfortable if, if, if we do decide to schedule a public hearing tonight, and then we're not happy with the next meeting, we can always continue the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Saret, if you're, if you have any, any more, if don't have any more comments, Steve, I'll let Saret um, answer, comment if she has any.
Yeah, mine is basically the same as Steve's. Uh, I saw their letter this afternoon. Uh, mine were more in, you know, much more micro comments than what it incurs. Uh, or when I see the plans, you know, they're likely to be answered. But you just said yourself, John, it's okay to open the public hearing, and if there are, you know, issues that there remain, uh, the board, you know, has the prerogative of keeping the public hearing open.
Okay, so any other board member comments?
Um, a, a small comment.
Sure.
If you don't mind, um, it's not a question. It's just, I realize we are doing this because the state required this change. Correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And I was really overwhelmed with the impact it made on the applicant. I mean, it was massive. And um,
they don't care.
What?
They don't care.
Well, they do care. I mean, they would have been more than happy to continue operating the facility.
No, no, he's referring to the state. I think Dennis, Dennis is talking about the state.
Oh, no. Oh, oh, you're right. They don't care.
I just, I just wanted to make a point that it suddenly realized me, uh, you know, I'm getting involved in your business, which I normally wouldn't be involved in your business, so I'm really paying attention. And it suddenly occurred to me, and I, I can't resist this comment, but it's as though your business, i- if you compare it with a human being, you are the bile duct. And that's terribly important. Well, the bile duct handles everything.
True.
Yeah. It goes to its final end.
Yep.
And it's rather important. Be funny, but it, it really is true. And I appreciate um, the business. I mean, we all should appreciate the business. It's important. That's it.
I, I, you've been in this town longer than I have, Nancy, but I've always thought since I've been in this town, we're fortunate to have that facility there.
Absolutely. We, you should have been here when I came, and that was when the rats were running down Route one hundred, because they sealed off the dump.
You present, you presented some quite graphic pictures tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm glad I ate already.
That's enough to say anymore.
If, I'm only kidding. If, unless there's any other onboard member comments, then I make a motion that we, uh, schedule a public hearing for April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. We'll see you then. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
See you next time. Thank you.
And we'll get those revised plans out.
Yes, please.
Don't, don't, while I have you there, I'm sure you thought of it, and this goes to everybody. Don't forget to change your clock Sunday.
Uh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Lose the sleep. Good night.
Good night now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next on our agenda is, um, the Fullerton Wetland and Water Cost Protection Permit for the properly located at thirty-two Mohawk Lane, and it's, it's an application for the installation of an in-ground pool uh, patio and to relocate their septic tank. It's in an R forty residence. Um, I'm not sure who's here from this applicant, who to let in.
Right now, we have Rich Williams in the waiting room, Andy Chung, and um, someone that says iPad. So let's see who that iPad person.
I think it's Andy Chung.
Andy Chung, at least.
It's Andy Chung on this one.
Okay, let's just see who we got so far.
And in the meantime, there's been nothing on the text messages.
Oh, Sarah? You can turn it down more. I'm, I don't want to touch it.
Well, I let these guys in, but they don't seem to be showing up here. Uh, do we have Andy Chung here?
I'm here.
We have the A.
We, we can, and do we have anybody here on iPad?
Yes.
Who is that?
Uh, Lenore Adams.
Oh, no, you could put her back in the waiting room. She's the last.
Okay.
Hello, Andy.
Lenore, we're gonna put you, uh, back in the waiting room.
Okay.
So Andy, do you want to just give us a, a brief overview, and then we'll talk about the project, please?
Sure. Uh, so the project is, uh, a proposed in-ground pool and patio. Uh, it is owned by Eileen Fullerton. Uh, the address is thirty-two Mohawk Lane. It's right off of, uh, uh, Tomahawk Street, Route two oh two. So there, uh, so she is proposed, well, I'm, I'm proposing a fifteen by thirty-foot in-ground pool and a patio surrounding the pool uh, as part of my design. Uh, well, as part of, uh, the, a part, one of the necessary items, there's an existing septic tank behind the house, and in order for, in order for us to put a pool and a patio there, that septic tank will have to be moved. Uh, and what I have proposed is that septic tank be moved towards the north to the side of the house. Uh, I follow all of the town setback requirements, the fifteen-foot offset to the property line. Um, and the ten-foot offset uh, from the septic line to the edge of the pool and all of the Board of Health required setbacks, uh, including the twenty-foot setback from the existing leach line uh, and the ten-foot setback from the moved, uh, the moved septic tank. In addition to that, uh, the runoff from the patio was going to be directed via trench grate around the perimeter of the patio. So that's going to flow into a pipe, uh, which would then go into a three by twenty uh, by one foot deep bio-retention system that's downhill from there, and that's to prevent, uh, you know, so all of the water that's collected from the patio will go into this little bio-retention system. Uh, majority of it will perk into the soil, and then whatever doesn't perk into a soil, there'll be a gravel emergency overflow that will go into the existing drainage way.
Uh, would you like to share your screen so that everybody can see?
Uh,
but if, if you think we're looking at, we, we can't see what your, if you're, we're not, it's not sharing now. Did you mean to?
Um, I, I had sent out plans to everyone either via thumb drive or CD. If you don't have it, I don't know if I, well, I guess I can share the screen.
Or just for the benefit of people at home, too.
Yeah, um. Uh, does that, does that work?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Perfect. Thank you. That would everybody can see.
Good, um. Can you see my, I guess you can't see my
We can see your cursor, yes.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, so, uh, where my cursor is, that's where the existing septic tank is. Uh, so you can see, o- obviously, if we keep it there, the pool can't be there. So what it was, I took this septic tank and I moved it over here up to the north.
Got it.
Okay, so that line comes from the back of the house, and will go into our new, our, our moved septic tank, and then the outlet of that will follow this line down here into the existing junction boxes and to the existing leach field. So I'm not touching the, the junction boxes. I'm not touching any of the existing leach fields. Uh, so the placement of the pool is actually, you know, so I followed all of the Board of Health requirements. It's twenty feet away from these existing leach lines. Here's the property line right here, so I have a fifteen-foot offset to the property line uh, for both the patio and for the, and for the edge of the septic tank. So I think I've, I, I've met all of the requirements for, for property line offsets and Board of Health offsets. So around the perimeter of this patio here, if you follow my cursor, there's going to be a trench grate, and that trench grate basically looks like looks like this detail right here. So all of the water that might potentially collect on the patio will be, uh, will flow into a trench grate.
Right.
Here is the low point of the pool right here. Uh, it's going to go from the trench grate to this four-inch schedule forty pipe, and that will flow into this little bio-retention system here, and that's to treat the water that comes off the patio.
Oh, excellent.
Whatever that doesn't fall, whatever that doesn't perk through here, there'll be a gravel emergency overflow, and it will basically overflow into this existing ravine that I'm sure most of you know, as you drive down Route two oh two, there's an existing water course uh, that kind of comes down Route two oh two here.
Yes.
Uh, and in addition to that, uh, the, I've, I've, I've gotten, uh, the landowner to uh, possibly agree to planting a couple of, uh, trees along the side of the uh, of the property here for, for some, for some screening as well.
Thank you.
First question.
Um, Steve or, or Saret, would you like to comment?
Yes, but I, I, was there a board member that had a question before I jump in?
Yeah, I have one question with the moving, moving the septic tank. Have these plans been submitted to the Health Department, and have they received any feedback?
These plans have not been submitted to the Health Department yet.
We're gonna need their concurrence before we can approve this.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
You bet. Time is of the essence.
Yep, they, they take, they, they have their own schedule. Um, so we did prepare a review memo on this, um, you know, un- unfortunately for the applicant, um, while it's a relatively simple project, the amount of, of earthwork does trigger a local stormwater provision, pollution prevention plan uh, requirement, uh, because the work is within the wetland buffer. Um, and so we provided comments around that, um, just to make sure that they're complying with that aspect of, of town code. Um, additionally, um, I would just ask, uh, that, uh, Mr. Chung reviewed the impervious area calculation, just to make sure he's picking up the whole patio, um, and provide some additional information on, uh, the soils in the vicinity of the bio-retention system. Um, this is something that, uh, could either be proven out now or certified, uh, later, if, if the board sees fit. Um, to have it done that way, uh, we would be fine with it being certified during construction with the understanding that that's risk that the applicant is taking on. Um, if there isn't sufficient separation to, uh, to groundwater, or they don't achieve the perk rate that's being used as the basis for that design. Um, further, uh, with this work being done, uh, an additional impervious being, uh, added to the wetland buffer, uh, we would recommend not further that that bio-retention system be sized to pick up some of the existing impervious area in the wetland buffer, whether we can pick up a couple of roof drains, um, in that area that, that provides a, an appropriate mitigation measure for the impact to the wetland buffer.
Can I, can I add something, uh, rather than taking the roof leaders into a bio-retention, can I take those roof leaders to a separate infiltration system in their side yard?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and if that's the case, uh, it might be easier uh, design-wise to put, like, you see where my temporary soil stockpile is. I mean, that's all usable space right there. I would rather, I would rather send everything to infiltration chambers. Um, honestly, right, rather than even doing it with a, you know, it's, it's going to be a lot more difficult to
Yep.
to construct a bio-retention along that, that slope there.
Sure.
I, you know, I, I, I would rather take the roof leaders and then take the patio impervious surface and, and and have that flow into a series of infiltration chambers, uh, in their, their, their side yard there.
Are you, so are you thinking about, uh, changing the bio-retention system? Did I, did I hear you correctly that you were talking about changing the direction of flow from the patio as well?
If, if, if I have enough capacity there, uh, in the, in the, the infiltration system, if I can, if I can fit the infiltration system where the temporary soil stockpile is or in that area, I would rather, I would rather do the construction there rather than go down the slope and try to do a bio-retention.
Yeah, just, um, I, I don't see the, the well for the property noted, and I, I think it's in that upper corner.
Yeah.
Um, so just confirm your setbacks with that, um, infiltration system.
Okay.
Especially, you know, with uh, chlorinated runoff, uh, if, if we want to deem it that, um, from the, from the pool splashing and, and things like that. Uh, we did have
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I said we did have a few, um, kind of procedural questions, just to understand dewatering and, and backwash from the pool. Um, as well as, uh, especially with the impervious, uh, surface calculation, um, the nature of the pool cover, um, and whether that needed to be factored in as well. That, that I'm sure is an easy question to answer, but, uh, just wanted to make sure it was documented.
Yep, yep, and as far as the impervious area, uh, in my my hydro cat output has the, the, the area, but I can, I can clarify that a little better.
Yep, I, it looks like it's about five hundred square feet.
Um, correct.
And I don't know that that is, uh, inclusive of all the patio area. Even if you take out the pool.
Okay. Okay, I'll clarify. I, I, I measured five hundred and fifty square feet based on the hatch, um, on my auto cab drawing, so, uh, that's fine.
I have a question. Is that a buried propane tank that's going to be new for this, or is that an existing propane tank?
We have an existing propane tank that's, uh, in the back. Uh, but because we're going to be using it, uh, for the pool also, for the pool heater, and because all those lines are going to be in the way, uh, the owner wants to move the propane tank in the front, or I guess in the side, in the side yard.
Okay, and that will be a properly protected and treated surface on that tank?
Y- yes, it'll, it'll, it'll be the same as what's existing now.
Okay.
Steve, do you have any more, any other comments?
I do not. Nope.
It's Saret?
No, I don't have any comments on this.
Um, do you, does everybody feel comfortable if we set up a date for a public hearing? I don't think it, I don't think it's necessary for a sidewalk, but I'm just one of seven.
I don't think so. I don't think a sidewalk is.
No.
No.
I don't think we need one.
I agree. I don't think we need one.
No.
No. So Steve, you, you feel comfortable enough with, with the little bit that they, that he, that he needs to, um, send over to you? We could set a public hearing for the fourteenth?
Um, I think that there are uh, some pretty, I guess I would anticipate that public hearing being held open. Um, pending receipt of, of information, but it's certainly fine to open it if, uh, with that anticipation.
Well, I guess the SWP is the biggest piece, right?
The SWP is the biggest piece, and it sounds like there's a, a significant shift that could happen in the site plan with respect to the bio-retention system.
Yeah, right.
So it, it feels a little premature, but, um.
Well, and we can, we can wait. Um.
I, I guess I would want to make sure that we have a final site plan before scheduling that, that public hearing, you know, with, with the prior application, there were, you know, minor comments and cleanup, where we understood where everything was.
Well, in theory, you set the public hearing when you have all the information you need.
In theory.
All right, then, if you want, we, we, we can wait. We can wait and set the public hearing at the April meeting for May.
I think that would be safer, considering the
Okay.
Department.
All right.
Yeah, right.
Then let's wait. We'll get this, um, we'll be back on the April agenda, and hopefully we'll have the, um, the new plans and, um,
and Health Department.
And Health Department has response. Yes.
Hope, and hopefully we can get that done so they can be swimming this summer.
Yes. Okay.
Great.
All right. You have any other questions for us, Andy?
Uh, no, that's it. I'll let, no, thank you.
We'll see you in April.
Will do. Thank you much.
Thank you. Um, okay, you can let, um, Lenore Adams in, please.
This is Lenore Adams coming in?
And Rich Williams.
This is, um, the last item on, on our agenda. It's an application for an abbreviated preliminary subdivision for a lot line change for one point four three nine acres from lot seventeen point twelve dash two dash five to be added to lot seventeen twelve dash two dash four, uh, that the property that's going to be subdivided is, it could be subdivided, is located at twenty-nine Route one sixteen and it's in an R forty residence only district. Um, Rich, you want to just, uh, go over, because I, I think, to be honest with you, I'm glad we have Joe with us tonight. I think at this point, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're kind of at, uh, this is more of some legal questions need to be asked before we get to planning.
Are you aware that he sent us a letter explaining the, uh,
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Explaining his decision.
So
He interpreted the right of way for us.
Yes, and, and And I think Rich saw that, too.
There he is.
Correct, and good evening, we did. Um, and I will touch upon that in our presentation.
Okay.
And the board would like to walk you through what we're proposing. So, good evening, Rich Williams, Insight Engineering. I have with me, uh, Lenore Adams, um, who's the owner, and I'm going to share my screen, and we'll start just by making sure everyone knows where the property is. Um, so everyone should be looking at the municipal tax parcel viewer for mapping Westchester. Um, obviously, we have Ivan Del Cemetery, Dean's Bridge Road, once, uh, one sixteen and two oh two, which heads off towards the Stone House. This is the entrance off of one sixteen to IBM. You have Shortway, which is the first entrance into the Lake Purdy's community, and then Entranceway. And this is, um, Lenore's property with the existing house on it. And this right here is the currently vacant landlocked piece of par, parcel of, and lock piece of property, which is accessed by that right of way. So just, just to give you an idea of where the property is relative to other things in Somers. Looking specifically at the property now, I just shifted the angle about ninety degrees. So here's one sixteen. And this is the existing property containing the house. And then here you have the current landlocked piece of property. And I'm going to trace this relatively fast, just, and sloppy, sorry, but just to give you an idea where the property lines are. And what we were talking about was, or the legal questions you heard about, what had to do with a right of way or deeded right of way that crosses over the neighbor's property, Margot Adams, which was originally created to access this back lot, which is undeveloped, and we are not proposing to do any development at this time. This is just a lot line change. Um, so we're really not affecting the status of that right of way, and I'll touch more about that in a minute. Um, so right now you have our, this is the current lock configuration, allow with the house. Um, the currently undeveloped lot, it does have a tennis court on it. Um, a little gravel access drive or walking path and a secondary driveway into the site. And if you'll notice, if I zoom in, what's really driving this? I'm just going to erase these lines really quick. Maybe. There you go. As we zoom in, this is the actual property line itself right here, and you can see how close it is to the existing structure.
Oh, wow.
And because of the irregular lot shape and the proximity of the existing structure, Lenore was concerned that if she ever went to sell the property or her family did, it would be troublesome and problematic just because of the irregular lot configuration. So what she wants to do now is take the opportunity to just do a lot line change or swap between these two properties whereby the house, the house lot would contain all the existing development. And then there would be this still undeveloped landlocked piece of property. When we originally started talking about the subdivision with Roland and Saret, um, we had come to the conclusion that because we're not seeking to develop this lot at this time, there, nothing needs to be done with the fact that it doesn't have any frontage, and we don't need to apply an open development area to this lot at this time. Open development area is the mechanism which would allow you to develop a property, one of the mechanisms, mechanisms should allow you to develop a property without frontage. Um, we also discussed the fact that we are not uh, increasing any non-conformities with respect to zoning. Therefore, we wouldn't need any zoning variances. Um, so this was originally perceived as a very simple, very straightforward lot line change, um, which would hopefully be processed under, uh, the abbreviated process with the recent amendments that were made by the town board. Um, but one question did come up today and, or in the past two days, and that has to do with this deeded right of way right here. And, uh, Lenore reached out to her attorney, John Malloy, and he actually came to the same conclusion Joe did, that this right of way does carry with the land. So it still exists as an access in the future, should something ever happen one day. Again, there's no plans for that. But we are permitted to use this right of way for pedestrian and vehicular access to these two properties. So that would allow these two driveways to remain. Um, there are, if you look closely, there's, um, an old patio and an old woodshed. Those have actually since been removed. Those did straddle the property line. So with Joe's recent interpretation, which again matches Lenore's attorney. So with Joe's recent interpretation, which again matches Lenore's attorney, we're hoping this is back to a simple and straightforward lot line adjustment. Um, just procedurally, um, if we, if we are all in agreement that we're past that legal question tonight, um, I believe under the abbreviated process, um, we would need to request a public hearing for, uh, under the preliminary code. And then we would come back and hopefully seek a waiver from a final subdivision process and an approval. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Well, you, you answered a lot of questions.
Trying.
Joe, do you want to comment, please?
Yeah, sure. Um, uh, first of all, it's good to, uh, talk with everyone and I appreciate the, the very gracious comments that, uh, I've heard from people left of my note today. So, um, on this project, I think, you know, Rich is correct, what, it does not compromise, that this proposal would not compromise that right of way, should it ever be necessary in the future. There were some specific questions raised by, uh, uh, by an interested party, which were answered in my memo, um, you know, about various points, um, here, whether it ran with the land, whether it was specific to a particular, uh, you know, sort of, um, person and then that person's heirs, but I, I, I think that really is pretty well settled. The language establishes it in a specific place. Um, and I, and Saret and I also had an additional conversation this morning where we walked through other issues that, that at first appeared a little thorny, but I think are, are, are cleaned up here and I, I, the only thing I would have come in the meeting suggesting, and it's, and it sounds like Rich has already addressed this too, is that we do take the opportunity to, be- because you're, you're now creating this larger lot uh, along the, the perimeter of the right of way. Cleaning up encroachments probably makes sense, um, as that ownership expands into that other lot. Uh, and it sounds like they've already done that or are willing to do that. So I, I, I would say with that, that you're, um, you know, that, that you, you're not, um, you're not causing yourself any future problems and, and anybody that wanted to use. You know, look, I could perceive some legal and planning issues with the development of that back lot, if anybody ever wanted to do it. But they would be present in any event, uh, for, for this lot, um, and this configuration using such a long right of way off the public road. Um, so, but nothing about this application changes those challenges should anybody come in at a future date.
Joe, is, is, was, is the ownership of those two lots the, the same person or there's different ships?
That's me.
Same owner. Well, go ahead, Lenore, I mean, I, which two lots? I just want to be sure. I know which two lots you're talking about.
Well, let, let's put the land that's, that, that's the, whatever, the one point four seven acres, if that's roughly, that, that land and which is being taken is changed from the larger back lot, land lot, uh, owning that land, the same person.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the reason why you were able to build a tennis court on something that wasn't yours. I mean, was yours.
That's mine.
Yeah, okay.
And I, and, and I will say too, I'm, I'm actually glad you asked the question because there is a piece of what Saret and I talked about this afternoon that, um, uh, that I should bring up to the board. I think we, we would want it, um, clear in an approval resolution that once this lot line is moved, this will be denoted as a, as a single unified lot, uh, uh, both as a development lot and and as a tax lot, because I think that also helps solve, otherwise you'd still have this, the, you, you want to make clear, in other words, that this is not just somebody acquiring um, a, a, another piece and suddenly that becomes this little triangular piece of its own. It's actually going to become part of that other lot. Um, because that potentially could be a problem with respect to the right of way. If, if you, if you left that piece being something that could ultimately be, you know, just deeded to somebody else entirely. I don't think that's the intention here at all, but I do think it's worth noting in a, in a resolution that that's the intent, that it's going to be one lot. Um, any issues with that, Rich?
Lenore, I mean, you don't have an issue with that, correct?
Oh, no.
Lots were merged.
Exactly.
I want to ask a question in another way, twisted way. I know that we as a planning board are not allowed by law to create a landlocked piece of property. So what we're doing here does not in any way, because I've, I hear you reflecting how compromised the large parcel in the back is for future development. We're not making that worse.
No, that's exactly right. It's, it, it's.
It's whatever it is.
Right, it's an astute question. It, it's the right question. And that, I think, is the point of, of, of clarifying that this application does nothing to, um, to limit the effectiveness of that right of way to benefit that back lot, which again is, as I said in my, in my note to you all this morning, or this afternoon. That doesn't mean, somebody still, if they ever wanted to use it, would have to come in and, and and make the planning argument, an engineering argument, that they could actually develop that access appropriately and, and, you know, and there might be challenges there, we don't know. But nothing about this application compromises that. That right of way remains viable for that purpose. And, and so no, and, and that is also the reason that I suggest that we just make clear that the little triangular piece that's being acquired does not carry on into the future as a, as an individual lot. It's not just going to be commonly owned, it's going to be actually one merged lot. Because otherwise, potentially, you know, that lot, y- you could make an argument is, is, um, what, might be landlocked. I don't think so, frankly, but it's just a safe, it's a safe approach. But anyway, it's a good question and I think the answer is no, and I think that's, that's the answer we need.
And another question is, uh, is there anything with regard to that, that right of way that restricts what, what can be built on that right of way? I mean, I mean, there are right of ways that are basically for trucks to go temporarily on something, but this right of way looks like it's going to end up being paved at some future date. Is there any, is there any description of the right of way that prohibits anything?
Yeah, I would suggest, uh, that the way it's written um, anticipates, um, both pedestrian and vehicular traffic along it and does not have limiting language about how it might ultimately be approved. And, and that's why I mentioned that that it, that's, that's a property right description. So, so what I mean by that is the, the deeds, um, do not restrict that in answer to your question.
Okay.
That's, that's not the same as saying that there would be no potential restrictions or limitations on what could be done and what would be appropriate in the event of a particular application, just like any other application that you see. That they might, you know, there might be provisions of the code either in effect now or in effect, uh, at some future date when they come in, which impact, uh, you know, uh, a, a right of way this long, um, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, some of the code or the, uh, types of actions that Rich mentioned, um, uh, that are sometimes used when you don't have direct access to a public street. So there could be limitations a- and, and one, but it wouldn't be because of the way this easement is written. Now, I will say in the big picture with easements like this, when, when easements aren't very specific in terms of the intensity of use that can be, um, that can be put on them. Um, generally speaking, th- there's, there's considered to be no real limitation. In other words, if you don't say what they can't do, um, and especially if you specifically mention vehicular access, then i- it's kind of the wild, wild west as far as what you might ultimately be able to do to improve it. Having said that, there are general principles in the law that there is a notion of, of, of at what point have you gone well beyond the intent of the original people that put it in place? I think in this particular case, you, you'd have to go pretty far really to make that kind of legal argument. But just as an example, you can imagine that a hundred years ago, sometimes people gave rights of way w- with, with no consideration that there would someday be truck traffic over there. And the easements will sometimes actually seem to reflect that. They'll say things like, y- y- you know, the, the Martha Johnson family will have the right to get to the lakefront by passing over my, you know, property, right? And, and if you look at that kind of easement, even though it's not specific and doesn't have specific limitations, a hundred years later, someone could probably come in and say, hey, this was never meant to be, this was a, this was a walking path. This was never meant to be that kind of path. But in this case, I don't think you'd bump up against that kind of limitation at the time soon.
But I can't build a six lane highway.
Exactly, e- exactly. And that would be limited by, by other considerations, frankly, more so than the deed.
Right, okay.
Fifty foot right of way.
Yeah, it's right away, right. Okay, I'm fine.
Saret, do you have any comments?
No, uh, these things were clarified in the conversation that I had both with Rich the other day and with Joe this afternoon, so I'm glad uh, actually that, that question was posed by Margot's, um, uh, relative, so we could straighten this all out.
Well, I, I have just one comment that's somewhat historic. I couldn't miss the fact that the, um, aqueduct runs north to south. Three hundred foot deep down. I always thought it went down Route a hundred. Now I see it doesn't. Totally unimportant, but anyhow of significance.
Yeah.
It was finished in nineteen forty, in case anyone cares.
So, so Joe, uh, this is Vicky. So Joe, your, your comments in the email and your comments just now answering the questions together, they all constitute your, um, legal opinion on the matter. Is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and in the, um, the last substantive paragraph, because it ends with, I hope, you know, helpful heading tonight, uh, it does state, and I just want to read this, um, uh, because I think it, it speaks to the, the issues of potential. The question of whether the fifty foot wide easement is sufficient to improve with a drive or a road at a standard which the planning board would be comfortable approving is no different than any review process you might engage in with respect to the development of a drive, of a driveway or a private road. There is nothing in the deed which prohibits this access, but the development of the lots would still be subject to all the restrictions and requirements of the code and planning board review. In other words, it, where nothing is being granted or done or agreed to, everything is still subject to the requirements and standards that would be met if at some point there was a proposal to do a development. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, um, if we're, I would just suggest that since the beginning, the initial part of the first paragraph um, includes a comment about why you, um, uh, personal circumstance, that maybe we just redact that out if the rest of it is going to be included as part of the record in preparation for the next meeting.
Yeah, you know, that's a, that's a good point. Yeah, what I'll do actually is after the meeting, I'll, I'll resend that email without the mention of my, uh, little hiatus.
Awesome, all right, very good. Thank you, thank you so much. And, and your comments were very helpful and this was a very helpful discussion. Really appreciate it, Joe.
Yeah, my, my great pleasure.
But actually, more important than, than this application or anything else is that you're in good health now, hopefully.
I do appreciate it, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Well.
Good to have you back. We need you very much. You're, you're the one that can, you're, you're the one that can turn mumbo jumbo into, um, ability for somebody that, that's smart like me to understand it.
Yeah, you know, you have, you have these experiences and I'll tell you, little things like being able to give a nice legal opinion, uh, make you feel real good about life. So, thank you.
I bet it does.
Um, board feel comfortable with setting, um, public hearing date for the fourteenth?
Yes.
I think that's our next step, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, that is.
All right, I make, I make a motion that we, uh, set a public hearing date for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thanks, thank you very much.
And just to say, no comments in the, uh, no messages came in in the text for this either.
Okay, I always forget to ask you that. Thank you. Um, be- before we adjourn tonight, uh, members, um, I just want to turn, turn the meeting over to Saret for an announcement, please.
E- excuse me, if I could.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Rich.
Sorry, sorry. Um, just one more thing, would it be possible to have a resolution prepared in hopes that if there aren't any public comments, uh, since this possibly is an abbreviated process, we could move to an approval?
We can certainly work on that.
Okay, I guess.
Good question, good thought.
You, you comfortable with that, Saret?
Yeah, you, we can certainly work on that.
Okay.
We'd have to close the public hearing, waive the final, and then do a resolution.
Correct, correct. Yep, if, if, if they're able to, we'll have one for you at the next meeting, Rich.
All right, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no problem.
No problem.
Okay, could you take down your, your plan, Rich?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, John?
Go ahead, Saret.
Okay, uh, I called John, I guess, yesterday or today, everything's moving so fast. Uh, I can't keep track of it, but, uh, I wanted the board, uh, to know that, uh, I am going to be retiring from my position as director of planning for the town. And that will be effective at the end of this month, on March, March thirty-first.
Oh, my goodness.
It may be new to you, but this has been in discussion since last November with Rick Morrissey. So it is not news to him. And, um, you know, I, I, as I said in my letter to him, and I'll say to all of you, it has been my distinct pleasure to work with all of you, with the staff, with the citizens of this town for what is amazingly the last nine years. And I enjoy, it, it, it really is. It goes very fast, very fast. Uh, and I have felt, uh, you know, that I have kind of been in the right place at the right time, that my skills have fit what has been going on in the town. There's been a lot going on in the town over the period that I've been here, a lot of new large scale development, which is, uh, particularly, you know, my background. And, uh, you know, I feel that it was a very good match. So, uh, I feel, you know, happy that I've been able to spend this, these last nine years of what for me has been quite a long career, uh, I would say more than forty-five years. It's hard to, uh, even, you know, conceive of that at this point, but it has been. And, uh, I just wish all of you well. And, uh, you know, you continue to do your good jobs and you have good people in all the places, the right places, in the town with your consultants uh, and all the people that come before you. So, uh, I just, you know, I'm thankful that I was able to spend these nine years here.
Wow.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm gonna miss you. On the other side, I'd look across and I catch your eye and it'd be, you know, you know, you know, I'm gonna miss you.
Well, the supervisor's taking, supervisor's so upset about it, he's not gonna, he's not gonna run again.
Oh, right. I, I don't think that had anything to do with it. Just, just coincidence.
It's not gonna be the same.
We are gonna miss you, Saret.
Well, absolutely. The same Nancy, but, uh, it always, it always is good. Nobody is irreplaceable.
No. But nine years.
Do good things, not because of health.
No, not because of health.
Wonderful.
Well, well, don't ride any, don't ride any more bicycles.
Yeah, well, I gave up my bicycle a few years ago, uh, though I must admit I still have it in the garage and I look at it longingly, but remind myself I better not get on it.
Well, now you're stepping into the role of grandma. That's another great role.
Yes, 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 uh, that, that'll be a happy, a happy, uh, opportunity. So I'm looking forward to that and you know, everything else that comes. So I've spoken to the staff in the planning office and you know, John, I'm sure will speak with Rick to find out uh, what the plans of the town are to provide, you know, planning. Uh, what the plans of the town are to provide, you know, planning services, it's not clear to me exactly what those will be. Uh, but uh, you know, he will make those arrangements and. Let all of you, you know, know what those will be, and I'm sure you will have very capable professionals to help lead you.
I actually tou- I touched base with him today, and he said it's on the agenda to discuss with the rest of the councilman um at the next meeting. There's a couple of different ways they can go, I don't know what 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 their thoughts are, to be honest with you. But soon as I do find something out, I'll let you all know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next town board meeting is tomorrow, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
Think you're right.
Yep.
So.
Well, good luck.
Good luck, Serret.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you for everything, thank you, thank you.
And enjoy yourself.
Enjoy retirement.
In the county, so you know, who knows, you may see me around. Up in northern Westchester sometime.
Good.
I love this county, I love, I love and everything about it and uh, plan to stay here for the long haul.
Good.
Oh, we'll see you at a county meeting.
That's could be.
Alright, everyone, I'm just another reminder, don't forget to change your clocks Sunday and um, our next meeting is April fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Certainly is.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, see you next month, thank you.
Good night, all.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Good evening.